This meeting of the Norwood City Council is hereby called to order. Please rise for the prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father, who art in heaven, is a body we congregate in these council chambers. We pray for thy divine guidance that we may do all things well according to thy holy will. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Whittington?
Here.
Ms. Allen? Mr. Thornbury?
Here.
Mr. Sancker?
Here.
Mr. Mumper?
We have five members present, and I will note that Ms. Allen, despite being ill, is going to attempt to come this evening so we can have six people. But we do have a majority, so we will go ahead and proceed with our agenda. Hopefully, when Ms. Allen gets here, we'll be able to proceed with some of the business at hand. I do have a request to amend the agenda, and that is to add an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a property investment reimbursement agreement with I Square Foot Inc., or I Square Foot Inc., and declaring an emergency. Mr. Clark?
I move to suspend the -- I'm sorry. I move to amend the agenda as you stated.
Second in line, Mr. Whittington. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Mr. Thornbury?
Yes.
Mr. Sancker?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. And I'll note that that would be under introductory reading of ordinances, number two. We do have minutes of the previous meeting from July 14th. It's your pleasure. Mr. Thornbury?
Yeah. Read it in its entirety? No. No. Yes, Madam President, I move that we approve the minutes.
Second in line, Mr. Braden. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Mr. Thornbury?
Yes.
Mr. Sancker?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have no reports of standing committee, nor third or second reading of ordinances. Without any objection, I would like to move that suggests that perhaps we move to administration reports at this point in time until Ms. Allen gets there. There's no objection?
No.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President.
For the first time, we hope that you speak a long time.
He's asked a lot of questions. Three issues which I'll draw out as long as I can. We had discussed, Chris asked me about before the meeting started, about talking about the farmer's market. That's the Williams Avenue Community Garden. Every so often once a month, they have a farmer's market down there, and it will be Saturday, the 29th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Walking around down the other -- yesterday, I stopped by them. I ran into Janie Sickinger later on. I told her there wasn't one ripe tomato for me to swipe. I hope that nobody had surveillance cameras, but there was all green tomatoes, not one red one. So if you show up down there, if you can show up down there, they have a lot of people coming in. They have a vendor that brings in great bread, among other things. So it's a very -- Mr. Thornbury is acknowledging the bread.
Great bread.
So it is, it's a great time. They work hard. It's a really nice neighborhood thing that they do down here. So that's, that will be Saturday at 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. The second thing, if you can remember back when we had transmission, and there was the issue of the tanker trucks going in at UDF there at Williams and Montgomery. It turned out that was denied. If you could buy there now, you can see a lot of construction equipment in there. They're spending a lot of money. They're going to make that a training center. So the work has began on that piece of property there. They got scaffolding out front of the building. They got a loader behind it digging an alley, I guess, for parking. So that's, that's well underway. So what was transformed was one thing that was negative, and now we've got something that's positive. One of the things I wanted to talk about, Joe Gears, our license for our water comes from Joe Gears. If it wasn't for Joe, we'd have to pay somebody. Am I correct, Madam President?
That would be correct. In the past, we used to contract with someone.
Yeah, so Joe has a Class III license, it's about as high as you can get. Joe goes to periodic training to keep his license up and to make sure that it's proper. Because when you have the purveyor of a water system, the US EPA and the state EPA are really close and really stay on you. There's a health commissioner on those that they used to have to go around and take readings at different locations throughout the city, and you have it tested to make sure the water was in good shape. In recent years and events with things going across the country, the idea of security for a water system and making sure that water is safe to drink is really a top priority, more so than people realize. They just turn on their tap, and it comes out, and they don't put nothing to it. There's a lot that goes into it. So Joe's attending these three days down there. It does two things. He learns a lot. But I think one of the most important things in talking to Joe, he has regular contact with state EPA and US EPA officials, which is a face-to-face and the exchange of information and a personal relationship that's developed over the years. I was going over the agenda, the preliminary agenda, and some of the classes, I wouldn't have a slight clue to tell you what it's about. It's biological and you're to manage -- let me run this way. C-Y-A-N-O-T-O-X-I-N-S in drinking water. So if you're aware of those things in drinking water, this is one of the things they're learning to prevent.
Psych toxins?
But seriously, it's a, it's a very important training thing and step that the city has to take to maintain our system. Because the last thing you want is you don't want to lock horns with the state EPA, and you certainly don't want to lock horns with the US EPA, or they'll shut us down. So it's just one of those things that goes on that I don't think a lot of people know about or even give much thought to until something goes wrong, as Donna can all attest to. The last issue is Deb Robinson was up here the last council meeting, and that school safe program that they were talking about, that grant, they needed somebody to represent it. Joe and I have been talking, and it's almost crucial, it's almost mandatory that Joe be there because it is Public Works and knows the ins and outs of the contractors and putting everything up for bid, and with his experience, and being that it's in the city, even though the school's got the grant, the way I understand it, the work will be contracted out by the city, and the money will come through the city and then dispensed out to the contractors, whoever they may be. There's a couple of reasons for Joe being on here. Number one, his knowledge and background in the construction and knowing the contractors is crucial, and the idea of getting, you know, what has to go out for bids and what doesn't have to go out for bid, and that's why we depended on the law department to advise us on those issues. And the other issue is, is we found out that they would like to, so I've asked Donna Legg to be the second member of that committee, and that's for a couple of reasons. As Donna's experience and knowing everybody in the city and knowing what's going, and knowing that if things start to slow down or bog down, they won't stay bogged down long if Donna's at the meeting. So she's a force to be reckoned with, and will keep things moving along. So I guess that's about it. If anybody's got any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Questions of the mayor?
Sure.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes, this is on a different subject, but people have been asking about what's going on with the playing card site, if there's anything at all. But we don't see much activity, and you can elaborate on that.
You're right. I can. Like I can. Like always, we don't give names, but we've, it's been a while, but Chris and myself, Chris Brown and myself and Joe Gears met with a company over there, and I think I've discussed this before. We had one company from Indianapolis. We didn't feel their pockets were deep enough to handle this project, and so we had another company that was a construction company who did a lot of business in this area, well-known or well-respected construction company. So we, as Chris and I explained, we tried to serve as a dating service. We tried to hook the two up to see if they could get along, so the construction company would have the financial background and the knowledge and the expertise to turn that around, and the other company would have their expertise. And the idea at the one time was to try to get, the one company said, okay, we want to put all rental units in there. We said, well, that brings nothing to the city. And there was discussion, well, we want to tear this down. Well, we stopped that right away. So they, they talked to the other company. Now, we haven't heard anything back. I talked to Chris Samardan, who is the owner of the building, on a couple of occasions. And as in the past, and I'll be quite honest with you, and this is not a tactic that we've used before, it's, we take this position as in the best interest of the city. For example, if somebody has a vacant building like that, and they have to have a vacant building license, or the city can cite them, well, all they have to do is say, we're marketing, and show some inkling that they're attempting to market the building. Some of these owners, some of these buildings, they want to do something to reduce their cost while that building is sitting there vacant. For example, they might have a sprinkler system that they want to make what they call a dry system, where there's no water in the lines, and if a fire should break out, they open up and the water flows to the fire and pumps the air out. The fire department didn't recommend that. It lowers their cost of maintaining that building, and I believe it might raise the risk of a fire, so we don't do anything to assist them. So it's to their advantage to let that property sit and do nothing. So if it hits them in the pocket to keep that building vacant, it's what we believe is, and it's worked in the past, is an incentive to do whatever you can to market that building. So that's where that stands. We, I believe, and I have this on no, it's an inkling after being around this a long time, I believe that he's talking to somebody, I just don't know who. And like many other issues, the law director has fashioned ordinances in the past where we put an order that's prohibited demolition. We put a planned unit development over the area, which means that if they want to sell it, that we can basically control what goes in there. Am I correct, Mr. Law Director?
That is correct, and that planned unit development also has anti-demolition provisions in it as well.
So that is the actions that we've taken to prevent that. We did the same thing with another area here where, if you remember, they passed a PUD where they prohibited dollar stores. And one area, they wanted to put a dollar store in, and we told them, no, it was prohibited. It was zoned out. They couldn't do it. I mean, this company offered us money to put a dollar store in there. We said, no. So, a long story short, that's what we've done over the playing card. We are waiting, we've taken everything, action that we can, to protect the long-range, best interests of the city, and yet not incentivize them to let it sit vacant, if that makes any sense. But so that's what it's, it's, there's a lot of discussion going on. We had, believe it or not, we had a distiller who was interested in it. So, and a mixed use, I mean. So, you know, there's, there's interest, it's just trying to find the right ones with the, you know, with the right pockets. He is obviously asking more money than what he paid for it, and the people that we've talked to, Chris and I talked to, and Joe, they just don't have the pockets to buy it, so we'll see.
Any other questions of the mayor? Mr. Sancker?
Yes, I'd go through the mayor, but possibly the law department may be the one who would answer, but is there anything, any new date set for the quality in?
Good question. Chris and I was just talking about, he can go in detail, the attorney, but I would, Chris just reported on some things to me tonight, so I'll yield it to Law Director, too.
Mr. Brown?
Madam President, the quality hotel is progressing, given that we're in pending litigation, and the last time we mentioned dates, I got a phone call from Channel 12 the next day. I think it's best that if you'd like, we can talk afterwards. I can give you up to speed. Or if we'd like, at the next council meeting, I can go into executive session to discuss current litigation, and we can inform the entire council.
Yes, Mr. Sancker?
So it is moving forward?
It's moving. It is still closed. That's --
I'm sure if we're forward, but maybe.
We consider every day that's closed, they win for Norwood. So as long as it stays closed, we're very happy with the way things are progressing.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions of the mayor? Mr. Braden?
Yeah, can you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Madam President. Is there any updates on the time capsule? Are you closer to making a decision?
Yeah, you know what? Some people are in a hurry. I've been tied up with these two business, there's two business ventures we've been working on, and I was going to talk to Donna about that. I know people are in a hurry. I said, it's been sealed for 100 years. It's a couple of weeks, but. And what I was thinking about doing, and I want to talk to Donna about this, I was thinking about, if you read the articles about that, the schools were included in it. I believe the Eagles, I think St. Peter and Paul Church, I think the Presbyterian Church. There was a lot of people that were mentioned in that article. So, and then talking to Donna, I want to talk to Donna first and either go to the school board or talk to the superintendent. I thought we'd have like a mixed thing, maybe like alongside City Hall, and have the schools come up, you know? If they want to bring the band up, have the band come up, and if somebody wants to come up and sell hot dogs to promote the band or something like that, do that. But then do it in such a way that it's, everybody's involved in it, not an in-camera, behind-close door opening of that thing. The idea is to open it when everybody is there to witness what's in there. I know there's something in there. One of the guys, when he handed it to me, he shook it, but stopped after he had a stroke. But, so we know there's something in there, but that's what we thought we would do, just pick a Saturday and talk to Donna about it, and talk to a superintendent of the schools, and, you know, just bring everybody together to do it rather than make a secret deal out of it, do it real, right out in the open. But being as the schools were mentioned, and I think the Eagles, and, sorry about the moose, I don't know whether they were around then, but the Presbyterian Church, St. Peter and Paul, several different churches, they were all mentioned in this new paper article, and invite them to be in attendance so we can watch it and all do it together. So I was picturing in my own mind, picturing a Saturday or something, and getting a hold of schools and see, we'll close off the street, and if somebody wants to, you know, if the kids want to sell hot dogs and coats and stuff like that to promote them, you know, boosters, the band boosters, or whoever, they could do it. That way, everybody's involved in it, and maybe one of these organizations can make a few bucks.
Yes, Mr. Braden?
Thank you, Madam President. Follow-up on that, can you explain how they got that out? Did they have to cut, like, was there a door, was it, did you have to cut through?
That's a, that's a good question.
They chipped away the brick, and they took it out brick by brick, and then the cornerstone was, there's a, the guy called it a piece of soapstone, and it was laid over the top of the, of the container itself. And so when they took the brick away, they just, and it wasn't mortared in, it was just laying there, and then they laid a brick on top of it. So they slid it off to the side and reached in and pulled it out. And looking at it, we thought at first, I said to Joe, I said, did I go out there and punch a hole in that thing? And the more we looked at it, no, they didn't drill. There's a hole in it, and if you look, it's made of copper. It was like punched, because where they punched it in, it's, you can see where it's bent down. And it's copper, so there's no, there's no shiny part of the copper. So either that was punched in there as a vent or something, but that hole's punched in there, and it's went. So we've looked at it, how to open it, and I said, it's got to be done right. Somebody said, well, you'll have to heat that up. I thought, that's all we need, to heat that up and burn everything up in there and open it up, and there's a bunch of ashes over there. There are different ways that, you know, they've talked about, either sawing alongside, you know, with a sawing tool or something like that. I'll leave somebody with expertise to do it, but that's the whole intent, is to, I know people have been getting impatient, but I've there for 100 years, what's a couple of weeks.
Agreed.
And if we can get the schools involved in the band or involved, or whoever else, whatever group wants to come down, sell hot dogs or whatever you want to sell to pick up a few bucks and make a, you know, make a Saturday party out of it, and then let everybody see what's in there. That was the thought. Thank you.
Any other questions?
If you'd like, as far as the Class III water license, I can tell you that I never thought of water quite the same way once I had to deal with the state and US EPA when I was the health commissioner. We found out that we were supposed to have a water purveyor on staff, and we hadn't done it for years. So I went up, we had to go out and find somebody, and we contracted with them for a number of years. It's not that easy to get. You have to have practical experience in actually digging up and repairing water lines, which Mr. Gears did in his previous lifetime. But the testing that goes on of the water system that we just kind of take for granted when you turn your tap on, every single day of the year, 365 days a year, so on weekends, I would take it home, or somebody in the health department would take it home, and we had to test for the amount of chlorine that's in the water every single day. And you had to keep it on a chart, and you had to report that to the state every month. There was, there were deadlines, so you had, and if you didn't have a certain amount of chlorine, you had to put out water boil alerts. Depending on the size of your population and the number of water outlets there are, determines the number of places that every month have to have samples taken for bacteria. You had to have a combination or a cross-section of single-family residences, multifamily residences, and business, and it had to be representative of the entire city. And so you had to come up with a collection standard. We would do, when I was there, I think it was 20 or 25, I think it was 20, so we would do, I would, or somebody would, do five of these places every week, and then we had to take them down to Cincinnati Health Department Laboratory for testing, and those reports came back. If there were any presence of E. coli, we had to issue a boil alert. Thankfully, that didn't happen very often. And then toward, every three years, there is a requirement that you have to test for the amount of lead that's in the, in the water system, and again, that had to be representative of both geographically of the city and in terms of the kinds of businesses or residences that we had to test. All of that is quite expensive. Thankfully, the lead testing is only every three years. It used, it's every five, I think. It used to be, we had to do it every year for three years until we could come up and prove that our water system had low amounts of lead in it, and then I think we went to every three years. The pamphlet that you get mailed in the mail every year that talks about the water system, that's all part of what Mr. Gears has to sign off on every month. So while other people in the city may do the testing and collection of the samples, Mr. Gears is the one who ultimately puts his John Hancock on that thing. He also has to work very closely with the water crew down at Public Works in order to make sure that when there is a water main break, that there's no negative pressure so that water doesn't get sucked back in, out of the street or from, you know, out of a dirty system into your house, and so he has to work with them. At one point in time, there was somebody at Public Works who ultimately got trained, and then, it's difficult to keep up that certification. So that person gave it up, and then Mr. Gears ultimately, to my knowledge, is still the water purveyor. Is that true?
Yes, and I might add one thing, I can say, because Joe's not here, because he wouldn't like it if I said this. Joe worked for Loveland for years, and Joe was working for Loveland as a service director. It was a big, large growth, and Loveland produces and sells their own water from wells. So his experience in building his license up, he built that system up then. So when you have construction going on, and you have fire lines coming in, they got to be looped, or whatever they call looped, and it's got to be supplied, and it's got to be so large, so those are all decisions that are made by somebody who's basically qualified.
Just a little history when you turn on your water tap, I'm going to, there's a lot of testing that goes on behind the scenes that you don't know about.
And he hates bottled water.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have other requests to address council. Dr. Paul Sohe, would you like to come forward, please? Give us your name and address, and you have five minutes to speak tonight.
Good evening, everybody. How's everyone doing today? Thank you for allowing me to speak today, Mayor, and I was just seeing that gem of the Highlands, and I think the gems are sitting right here. I think I can see them.
Oh, no. I regret this is hurting.
You are controlling that Highland, aren't you? All of you. And that's great. It's commendable. As an introduction, I am so invested in Norwood. For 29 years, I have provided pediatric dental care right here in Norwood. If you catch hold of a kid running around and ask him, where does he go for his dental care? He comes to Dr. Paul Sohe. Ninety percent of the kids in Norwood come to me. Their families trust me. For 29 years, this is my town. Norwood is my city. And because it's my city, I would love to do anything that would help the city. I want to thank you for giving me this opportunity, who I am, and I want to introduce to the fact that I'm running for Ohio State Representative, number, it's District 31, which Norwood is in that district. The primary election's on March 15th, next year. As a reference, I have been a surgeon for Children's Hospital for the last 21 years. Currently, I'm not, but for 21 years of experience gives me an experience of being a healthcare provider, understanding how the hospitals work, being involved in the administration of the Children's Hospital makes me understand what things are and not going properly in the legislative, at the state house. Mayor just said I just about had a stroke. He mentioned that, because somebody handed him a paper now. I'm just referencing into the fact, if, not him, but these factors, things that we are growing older, and some of our healthcare issues are going to be so much affected at the Ohio state level, and we don't have a single healthcare provider in the state. I probably will be the first one, and I'll make sure the healthcare aspect, from the provider to the hospitals, to the legislations we make, benefit the people. Being a business owner, you have to be successful. You also have to be responsible to make sure the money coming in and the money going out is all balanced. It's a fiscal responsibility. My track record shows that, and I'll bring that to the floor of the legislature. Those are important things to consider. When you, the respected representatives of Norwood, want to assess who are these candidates who are running to represent Norwood, I would humbly respect, respectfully ask you to look at the track record of someone who's been here, someone who's been invested in the families and the children, and who has done so much, because I want to tell you why I say that statement, I have done so much. I'll tell you why. I'm a pediatric dentist. There are very few pediatric dentists in the country, and wherever a pediatric dentist, it's after you become a dentist, and then you go through the education, and then you become a pediatric dentist. the education and, and then you become a pediatric dentist. When you're a pediatric dentist, you're very much sought after because there's some kids who are out of control, they have to be seen by a specialist. And when that happens, you're in demand. When you're in demand, they don't want to see, from a business perspective, they don't want to see, they want to see cash patients and the best insurance possible. I have rejected that philosophy. Being trained in the Jesuit school of thought is I drive more pleasure in giving than receiving.
Dr. So, your time's about up, can you?
Yes, so, thank you for reminding me, because, you know, politicians give a lot of lip service, so I'm not going in, but, uh, I'd like to stick to that. Um, I have accepted Medicaid, uh, for the last 21 years that I've been in practice. That's giving a lot of money, not receiving a lot of money, and that's, that's service to the community right here in Norwood. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. So. We'll move on to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business? None?
Well.
Yes, Mr. Thornberry?
Let me clarify, and I, Mayor, I don't mean to repeat what you were talking about, but the fan was blowing pretty loud when you were talking about the garden, and I just want to make sure that the audience viewing this is clear on the, because it's in my ward, the Norwood farmers market that we'll be having this Saturday. Uh, it, it, as, as the mayor indicated, it's become quite a, uh, it's about the third or fourth time they've done it now. They'll be doing it for a few more months, once a month, up until the end of the harvest season. And, uh, it, it's grown into something really, really nice. The food vendor, number of food and produce vendors are increasing, uh, and, uh, it's, it's just a great thing. I really encourage everybody to stop by, again, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., right at the corner of Williams and Elsmer, just spitting distance from the, uh, Williams Avenue Grade School and, uh, across where we all used to vote, at the Korean Methodist Church, and, uh, it's a, it's a great event. And, uh, looking ahead, the weather's going to be perfect, I absolutely guarantee it. So, just want to put in another plug for the, the farmers market.
And the other unfinished business. Mr. Sankar.
Just, um, a note, even though we haven't read the ordinance yet, but we had, did set the dates for the Citywide Yard Sale, which is September, the Friday, September the 4th and Saturday, September the 5th, um, from 9 till 5 on both days. And, uh, get your, um, permit prior to, there's no charge for the permit for, at this, uh, the Citywide Yard Sale, so it's a good time to take advantage of that. And then, in September, the weather is still pretty good, so we would encourage everybody to participate, and, um, it will be held on September the 4th and 5th. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there any other unfinished business? Is there any new business? Mr. Sankar.
Yes, I would, if we could, I apologize for not thinking of this before the meeting started, but I would just like to, uh, mention that this past month that, uh, we did lose a former, former city council member, Jerry Geselbrock, um, from the city of Norwood here. Jerry served on council. Um, he passed away, um, at an early age, and, uh, like to keep him in mind, plus, um, Al Bame, who actually served on different commissions here within the city, dedicated a lot of time and also, uh, ran for mayor, um, here in the city of Norwood as well. Al, uh, passed away also, um, this past month, so I would like to, uh, hopefully, everybody can keep them in your thoughts and prayers, they're family, and, um, you know, uh, move on. So, thank you.
Thank you. Both very suddenly, in a short amount of time, when they learned of their illness, so they will certainly be missed. Any other new business? All right. Um, the chair notes that Ms. Allen is here. Thank you so much, I know that you are not feeling well. Without objection, we'll move back up to introductory readings of ordinances. Um, the first is an ordinance promoting the citywide sale and abatement of all permit fees associated with the sale. Mr. Clark.
I need to suspend the rolls and have all three readings of this ordinance.
Seconded by Mr. Braden. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornberry?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye to motion carries, please have all three readings.
Ordinance promoting the citywide street sale and abatement of all permit fees associated with the sale. Ordinance promoting the citywide street sale and abatement of all permit fees associated with the sale. Ordinance promoting the citywide street sale and abatement of all permit fees associated with the sale.
Mr. Thornberry?
Yes, Madam President, I move that the ordinance be passed.
Seconded by Mr. Clark. Is there any discussion? Mr. Sankar.
Yes, Madam President, just to reiterate, as we discussed earlier, the dates for the Citywide Yard Sale are Friday, September the 4th and Saturday, September the 5th. So, hopefully, everybody can participate. Thank you.
I know the senior center will be again, but they've been looking forward to this date, uh, being set. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornberry?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye. The next is an ordinance that was added to the agenda, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a property investment ream, reimbursement agreement with I Square Foot Inc. and declaring an emergency. Um, Mr. Brown is here and can explain this, the law director, if you are so interested in, um, having him go over briefly what is entailed in this agreement. Mr. Sankar.
Um, yes, Madam President, I'd first like to also make a motion that, that we have the first reading in its entirety and the second two readings by caption only, and also request that the law director give a brief synopsis, um, of what we had discussed prior to receiving this.
Seconded by Mr. Clark. So, the motion on the floor is to have the first reading in its entirety and the second and third by caption, and then to have Mr. Brown give us an explanation. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornberry?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye to motion carries. Mr. Brown, can you help us out here?
Yes. Thank you, Madam President. Over the past couple of months, the mayor has been working with I Square Foot, they're a company out of Lewash, they are seeking to relocate here within the city of Norwood. They will be bringing approximately 300 employees with a payroll, a minimum payroll of about $17 million. What they've asked the city to do is to provide an economic incentive called a property investment reimbursement agreement. This economic incentive was previously offered to Paycor. What it does, it allows for them to have a tax credit that can be applied on their income tax, uh, based on the amount of taxes withheld by their employees for Norwood income taxes. The amount of credit that they're seeking is 0.5%, so instead of paying 2%, they'll be paying 1.5, or they're receiving a credit equal to 0.5% of the taxes withheld. This credit can be applied towards their taxes that they have to pay to the city of Norwood, and any overage goes into a, their general banking fund. Uh, again, it's very similar to Paycor. And setting up this agreement, the city was well aware that we wanted to provide adequate protection so that a company moving into the city does not come in and then within four or five years decide that there's a better offer down the road and ends up leaving the city. So, we have instituted clawback provisions where if they leave less than five years after relocating to the city, we will receive 100% of the credit that had been previously paid out to them. And then it gradually steps down to, if they leave after eight years, they will receive a 25% clawback to the city. That ensures that no one can later come in and try to lure them out during the length of the agreement. The agreement itself will be lasting till December 31st, 2027. After that, if they're still here, they will be not eligible for that credit. We will be receiving 2% of the payroll. And doing the math, uh, it calculates to about $300,000 with the tax credit, and I believe $400,000 without, so the city will be out about $100,000 annually with that tax credit. Mechanically, the credit will be stored in a separate fund that will, generally, they allocate it to the tax refund fund of the city, so that there will always be money available to pay them out per the schedule that's listed in the agreement. Uh, we previously have one set up through Paycor. Uh, it's working very well mechanically and also benefiting the city. Because Paycor is growing, we expect that this particular company will be growing. Uh, we, we believe that the $17 million is basically the floor. Uh, they've represented to us, uh, anywhere between 20 and 23 million dollars growth. Uh, the mayor can elaborate more in terms of the economic growth and the potential of the project, but that's pretty much what you're looking at, basically authorizing the mayor to enter into this agreement so that they will be getting their tax credit.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, this company is growing so fast, that basically what they do is they take, as I understand it, they take construction drawings, uh, for large projects, and they computerize them and they put them in such a form, if you're, if there's this large project going on, you're, you're a tile contractor and you want to, you know, bid a job on that, you can go into that system that they, they devised and, and get the exact information you need. This is a unique service and it's growing so fast. As Mr. Brown alluded to, we, we had a lot of discussions with them and their potential for growth, and all we're hearing is good things. So, it, it's one of those deals where we've said 100 times that, um, I think they're taking two floors, I think it's right around 60,000 square feet. So, they'll move in with 300, and in their projections, they expect to hire 100 people over the, an additional 100 people over the next few years. So, it's a growing company, and, and the payroll will go from something like 17 million, $500,000 up to 23 to 24 million dollars. So, it's, once again, it's that, um, it's that growth potential. And I've, and I've said, you know, more than one times, we have to compete and we are. Uh, we've got a good reputation, uh, we are getting people coming to us wanting to talk a lot, so this is, uh, this is another, uh, good thing for the city. Uh, if anybody's got any other questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Just one other point, in talking with the company, they are planning to start operations January 1st of 2016. That includes relocating their employees, turning the computers on and being ready for business early January. So, we will start collecting that income tax revenue beginning January of 2016.
Mr. Whittington?
Uh, yes, uh, I think we talked, maybe you can let, well, it was about 15 minutes. The, uh, can you elaborate on whether this is new construction or existing building?
That, that's a good question, Mr. Whittington, thank you. Uh, it, it is, it's an office building, it's just been completed over at Rockwood. I think they'll put in something like 15 million. Uh, it'll be for equipment, office equipment and everything else, but they'll probably be, my guess is 5 or 6 million dollars in construction to build out that, that, those two floors, which of course, then there's the building permits, uh, that will come towards us. So, I'm guessing now, it's a guess, if it's 15 million dollars, I think that's for equipment, computers and everything else. And then I, I believe that 5 or 6 million dollars will come into the construction, because it'll be totally built out. Because they, they totally expect to expand, uh, exceed, uh, their, their projection on hiring and earnings than what they, what they furnished us in Jobs Ohio. They went to Jobs Ohio and furnished them same information and Jobs Ohio, uh, sent something their way, so it's just a growing company.
Any other questions? Please have the first reading in its entirety and the second and third by caption.
Ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a property investment reimbursement agreement with I Square Foot Inc. and declaring an emergency. Whereas I Square Foot Inc. seeks to expand its business operations containing 287 jobs with an annual payroll of 17 million, 200,000 to 23 million dollars to the city of Norwood, and whereas the city desires to continue to assist in that expansion, now therefore, be it ordained by the council of the city of Norwood, state of Ohio, that Section 1, this council hereby authorizes the mayor to enter into a property investment reimbursement agreement with I Square Foot Inc., a copy of which is attached hereto and incorporated herein as Exhibit A. Section 2, as a result of the findings made in the preamble's and the preceding sections and council's desire to continue to encourage the economic development of Rockwood Exchange, the city of Norwood specifically approves and adopts the documents attached and incorporated as Exhibits A. Section 3, this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency ordinance and a measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety and general welfare, and shall go into effect forthwith. The reason for said emergency is a necessity to proceed forthwith. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a property investment reimbursement agreement with I Square Foot Inc. and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a property investment reimbursement agreement with I Square Foot Inc. and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Thornberry?
Yes, Madam President, I move that the ordinance be passed.
Seconded by Mr. Clark. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornberry?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper? Oh, sorry, Mr. Thornberry.
All members present voting aye to motion carries. Next, we'll move on to resolutions, um, introductory resolution, uh, readings of resolutions, a resolution declaring it to be the desire of council, that Halloween trick-or-treat be celebrated between the hours of 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Saturday, October 31st, 2015. Mr. Thornberry?
Yes, Madam President, I move that we have the first reading of the resolution.
Seconded by Mr. Clark. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornberry?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye to motion carries, please have the first reading.
A resolution declaring it to be the desire of council, that Halloween trick-or-treat be celebrated between the hours of 6:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. on Saturday, October 31st, 2015.
Move on to communications. Uh, the only communication we have is a letter from Chuck Barlow regarding monthly earnings tax report.
To Norwood City Council from Chuck Barlow Earnings Tax Department, 8/17/2015, RE Monthly Earnings Tax Report. Attached are the monthly reports for July 2015 indicating collections of the amount of $1,200,512.58. This reflects an average year-to-date increase of 7.95% from 2014. Should you have any questions, please contact the Earnings Tax Department.
Mr. Thornberry?
Yes, Madam President, I move that the memo be received and filed.
Seconded by Mr. Braden. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornberry?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye to motion carries. We do have one absent member, Mr. Clark?
Move to excuse the absent member.
Seconded by Mr. Thornberry. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornberry?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye to motion carries. Mr. Braden?
I move adjourned.
Seconded by Mr. Clark. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornberry?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye to motion carries.